Okay. Keep people in suspense while I get my glasses out. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is June 22 at 7:01, according to Mr. Hewitt Packard. This is a regular scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. This meeting is being broadcast on, broadcast live on WCTV. Also, we have an audio recording of this done by our Recording Secretary with my sincere thanks, Ms. Michelle Ruiz. So, what I would like to do is open the meeting with public participation. So, anybody who would like to address the committee, if you would please come down, speak into the microphone, please identify yourself.
Do you guys hear me? Good. For those who don't know me, my name's John Souza. I teach at the high school. I'm talking in response to an anonymous letter that was submitted and was read and made it to the papers. I'm here in support of my school, of my administration, and of my district. My name again, I'm going on record, I'm not going to sign it anonymously, John Souza, and I'm going to use names. There was quite a bit about teachers leaving the district and not coming back because they're unhappy. I find that in every district, but two great examples of teachers who are not leaving and who I believe are two of the best teachers I've ever seen, they're from Wareham. Ashley Salerno and Craig Bariel have not gone anywhere. They don't plan to go anywhere. There's teachers like that throughout the district, I'm sure not just at the high school. As far as my direct relationship with my Department Chair, he's amiable, he's approachable, he sometimes plays middleman in very difficult situations. I commend him for that. I have never been in fear of him. I go to him with everyday things or things that maybe a little bit, you know, touchy to go with somebody else, too. As far as Ms. Freitas, she's our Assistant Principal, I've never met an administrator who cares more about his school and about her kids. The things that she does for those children, for those students, she treats some of them like they are her own. Mr. Palladino is a fearless leader. Sometimes he has to make decisions that people don't like. I find him approachable. I've built a very professional relationship with him. I would go to him with anything. I've never been in fear of him. I believe letters like this create this metaphorical clout that surrounds, I don't want to say the town, but it surrounds some of our students. It surrounds this stereotype, and I think when letters like this gain attention, it shouldn't happen. I think that metaphorical clout needs to disappear, and we need to focus on positive because there's so much positive in my school. I realize my comments in support may make some mad whoever wrote this letter. I'm not saying that it is a union supporter or somebody in the union, but I've had to deal with the union as well, and they supported me and came to my defense and had my back. So, I'm not attacking anybody, I'm just here in support of my school. And I just want to end it by saying, our students are some of the best students and best kids I've ever been around. I bleed blue, I know a lot of my students do, I know my administration does, and I think if you're going to submit that letter, it needs to be signed, and I'm here in support to say, I don't want to be placed under that letter as an employee of Wareham High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that would like to address the committee? Good evening, Mr. St. Julian.
I'm not a, I'm not here as administrator, I'm here as a person that's been in this town for 23 years. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a parent. Two of my kids went through here. I went through four or five superintendents. The first two stayed away from, shied away. The last three had no problems, and I'd like to echo everything that John was saying is that this idea of atmosphere, of fear, is complete. In my, just for me, so I know that it was anonymous, but I don't want anyone to put anything under my name, I think it was referred as to, I represent all of administration staff and whatever. This is just by me, and I represent myself, and I think that what was said was, does not represent what I feel as a parent, as a taxpayer, and I would say something just for Dr. Shaver Hood, that her door is always open. You go by there, I remember the first year she was here, and I was talking about something with Global Ed, and she came in and talked to me, and I was like, just, she really wanted to hear and be innovative and make changes. Then, as deans, same thing, and I feel like her door is always open, and I appreciate what she's done for the school so far, and hope for a brighter future. So, I just want to echo what John was saying, and as a taxpayer, I'm happy what's going on today.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would like to address the committee at this time? Seeing no one else standing and jumping and running down the steps, let's move on to good news. Do we have Mr. Sweat?
I'm good, thank you.
Mary?
I'd just like to share that I went to the eighth grade promotion ceremony, and that it was well organized and great transition activity for the eighth grade is going into the ninth grade.
Thank you.
The Key Club had a car wash fundraiser last weekend at the fire station, and we raised over $600 for the Key Club.
Wow. Excellent. Dr. Sylvia?
Well, this is good news, but I don't know if it has anything to do with the school department, but we are in the presence of greatness. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Sweat for being chosen volunteer of the, volunteer of the Year for the YMCA, so congratulations. Jeff, well deserved.
I am flattered, I am humbled. It's a wonderful organization, there were lots of deserving people, I just lucked out.
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you. We've received preliminary approval of free and reduced lunch and breakfast, so next year will be free breakfast and lunch at all our schools. So, we're thrilled about that. So, we brought the high school back on, and we're looking forward to offering. We also have meals going during the summer, please look in the paper, and if you are looking for meals for school-aged children or lower, please contact us, and we'll be happy to share with you where the pickup sites are. And finally, I'm very happy to introduce our new middle school principal in person, Dr. Peter Stedman. He's here, and if he would like to come forward and just say a few words, we're welcome, we're very happy to have you, and we look forward to the next several years working with you.
Excuse me. You didn't get a 10-year contract? Oh, that's right, I don't believe in long-term contracts, never mind.
Thank you, Dr. Shaver Hood. It's wonderful to be here. I just want to say that I started on Monday after a long trip from Brazil on Saturday morning, and I want to say and report that I was welcomed by an amazing community behind me, and by Dr. Shaver Hood, and by Dr. Schwam. Thank you so much for the warm welcome I received, and I'm really excited to be here. Can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. All set?
All set.
Okay. Minutes of the last meeting.
I move acceptance as presented.
Second it.
I have a motion to second to accept the minutes. Any discussion? There being none? All in favor? Aye. It's going to be 3-0-1. Well, is there a particular order that you would like these in?
We do.
Oh, we do?
We do.
Okay. We're going to go into the school improvement plans, and Dr. Schwam, you have a batting order for this?
Yes, we do. And I'm up first.
Leadoff hitter.
So, this is the order. The first person to present will be the Wareham High School, Mr. Scott Palladino. Second will be the middle school, Dr. Peter Stedman. Mine at Forest Elementary will be Ms. Joan Siemens, and for Deaconess will be Ms. Donna Noonan. I'd like to just briefly go over the process that we have done in the last few months so that you're aware, the whole committee is aware of the process. On April 1st, we presented a report, the strategic plan report entitled WPS 2021 to the school committee. On April 6th, the strategic plan was approved by the school committee. Through the process, all schools were given a rubric to grade where they felt they were. That rubric was shared with faculty, with school councils, with depart, with department chairs, with school leaders, and everyone had the opportunity to grade where they thought they were in categories that matched the initiatives chosen by the strategic planning committee. From that process, the schools went back to their buildings and began to develop their school improvement plans. So, that's where we are, and what I would like to do first is introduce Mr. Scott Palladino from the Wareham High School. I'm going to read it because it's really good. This took a long time, but it's really good. "So, the Wareham Public Schools will provide challenging, innovative, and engaging educational experiences that create a global understanding and a competitive advantage for our students, our schools, and our community, creating a better world."
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
What's the protocol for questions tonight?
What's your pleasure?
What's your pleasure?
We'll wait till he's done.
Well, why don't we do this? Let's go through a section and ask questions at the end of the section.
Brooks or me?
Okay.
Okay, so we're looking at four standards, first standard being scholarship, and in the area of scholarship, what we're looking to do, as I know you're all aware, is to incorporate the 101 technology with our students. We've incorporated that with our staff in December of 2015. All of our staff receive Chromebooks, and we have been spending a lot of time on professional development, specifically in regards to educational apps, Google Classroom. For the students, they'll receive those Chromebooks over the summer at a date to be determined, and we will continue with the requirement of digital portfolios. For incoming freshmen, this will be a freshman and sophomore class for next year, will be involved in the digital portfolios. Obviously, eventually, everyone will be involved. All students are required to have a portfolio. Juniors and seniors will have a traditional portfolio. Again, freshmen and sophomores will be digital. I want to recognize the survey. We had 94% of our students, I'm sorry, of our staff that felt, we are incorporating innovative teaching practices, and I think this truly aligns to that with the one-on-one and the push for teachers to test the boundaries, incorporate new technology into their instruction. 83% of the students felt they could show their learning in many ways, and we feel that number's only going to increase as we incorporate technology. So, that is our scholarship standard. I'm going to move on to our next standard, which is leadership.
Before we do, questions, comments?
Go ahead. Okay.
Well, somebody, go ahead.
So, I just need clarification. I'm sure it's in here somewhere.
Sure.
I would think it would be in this section, but, you know, maybe I'm missing it. So, where, and I noticed in the other plans, it is addressed, for the struggling learners. Where is it addressed?
We have many programs for struggling learners.
But I mean, in, within your plan, being a level-three school, you would think it would be in...
For one, yeah, we were level-three, that's correct.
Yes, so I would think it would be in your plan, somewhere.
In our plan? Well, we have all kinds of programs that we've identified for those level, for those students that are struggling, specifically special needs. We've hired a few more special needs stu, teachers to decrease the size in the inclusion classes, so that's the first thing we really looked at, was why were we struggling when some of those class sizes were higher than our college prep courses? So, that's one of the measures we took out. We also, as I think we presented before, we have a freshman program for students that are freshmen that are struggling, that we identify right off the bat, and we've been very successful with our core English and core math classes for students that are pre-identified as struggling students in regards to MCAS. So, those are some things that we have in place, and some of the things we brought into place for next year and for this year.
I'm glad to hear that.
Yes.
I just would like, I don't know, I would have liked to have seen something in the plan about it.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Sweat?
Is it, I've seen a lot of your student, your school improvement plans, is it fair to say that during the many years you were level-one, that didn't go to your head? You were still focused on trying to improve things? I mean, what level you are really has not been a focus of trying to improve the school. Is that a fair statement?
Definitely. We're always trying to improve. Whenever, you know, resting on our laurels, we're always trying to improve, trying to get better. We're not staying static, that's for sure.
Question I had is the Chromebooks. I admit that I had a brief conversation, I think Dr. Schwam was there, with Chris Tahan, is that?
Right.
Yes, that is. And there was some protocol procedure being talked about with respect to students taking the Chromebooks home.
Correct.
Is that part of the plan for this fall?
Correct.
And have we worked out a plan that everybody agrees is going to work in terms of, in terms of how those books are cared for, replaced, et cetera?
Sure. I mean, yeah, we've been actually ironically, we're working on that this morning with department heads, and, you know, we look at it this way, we send home a science and math book, those are equal to, if not more costly than, the Chromebook itself. So, there's quite an investment in those backpacks, and hopefully, eventually, we'll get to a point where, where electronic books, online books, hopefully, we're at that point in time eventually, where we're constantly getting updates, instead of, you know, every 20 years, maybe purchasing a book that's, you know, been recently published. Now, we'll be in a position where we can stay updated, stay up-to-date, and lighten the load in the backpack as well.
I get that. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, will every Chromebook that goes home have insurance?
Every Chromebook that goes home, the family will have the opportunity to purchase insurance.
Okay. If they don't purchase insurance...
Then they're self-insuring.
They're self-insuring, and they understand that.
They will, there's paperwork that they sign off on attesting to that.
Okay, and so what would, if they took that risk, what would it cost a family to replace a Chromebook?
We're hoping it's not a total replacement. We have a tech person that will be dealing with any issues, but if it was a total replacement, I believe the price is about $180, and it's only going down.
I understand. So, they're on the hook for $180, and they know they're on the hook for up to $180.
Correct, and they'll sign off on that.
And how much is the insurance?
I believe it was 20-something dollars a year.
Right, multiple years of the break, but it's all in the paperwork that will be distributed. I don't remember the exact...
But it's approximately $20 a year?
Probably 35, I guess. I'm thinking it's around 35, but I'm not sure if I'm right. I'll have to go back and check.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
It's not really that new, though, because we've been charging kids for lost textbooks for years, and a brand-new, and a brand-new textbook runs you 150 bucks.
You're not kidding.
And you can't charge them for used book because you've got to replace it with a, with a new book, so the idea that you're going to be responsible for either a piece of technology or a textbook is you're responsible, and we have ways of collecting the debt, correct?
Correct.
We do. We put them in a little room.
No. Not true.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
So, the next portion is leadership, and you've heard it many times, there's been presentations on the IB program, and this is going to be a great program for the high school. We have a large percentage of our staff that will be trained before the end of the summer. We have people being trained right now, some people being trained in the latter part of July, and so we are looking forward to being in the process of getting approved for the IB diploma program, which will happen during the first semester of this coming school year. We will also have some training for our middle-years program, hopefully in November, to get all of our teachers qualified as middle-year teachers, and what we hope to see is through our observations, more IB instructional strategies being used by those that have been trained, and also having more conversations led by the folks that have been trained with the rest of the teachers on what they've learned, and this will be documented on standard one and two of our teacher evaluation. And what we found interesting, and we certainly hope to improve this, 80% of the parents that were surveyed felt the teachers encouraged the children to work hard, and we really feel this is raising the bar, this is increasing the rigor, and we hope to bring that number up even higher next year when we do the parent survey. Certainly entertain any questions.
Questions, comments?
I do, I'm just going to have to bring up that I do have a concern, and the concern is how we're going to financially support this through the years, because I know it's an extremely expensive program, and that's one of the main reasons a lot of schools don't adopt it, because of the expense.
I think when you look at the expenses, the largest portion is, it's front-loaded, and I think when you look at what the actual expenses are after the fact, it's much more efficient. It's not, as you spread the training out that needs to happen, it's spread out over multiple years, and what's great is IB is finally getting caught up with the technology. The largest portion of the schools that have had the program, the largest cost, has been in postage, believe it or not, more than the training, and now with their new system, everything gets uploaded through their website, so that has brought the price drastically down. But you're right, back when there were people, some schools were spending as much as $10, $12, $15,000 in posted charges for the exams and the diploma process. So, I think it's come down to a much more reasonable amount, but it's certainly something that we have to have an eye on, but I think when you spread it out, it's more palatable, and the bottom line is, it's a great program for our students, and they're going to be challenged, and they're going to enjoy the experience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Oh, yes.
A pretty big chunk upfront, certainly in years one and two...
Correct.
Are grant-funded, is that correct?
Correct.
Can you quantify that to ballpark?
The largest cost upfront...
Percentage-wise, I don't mean dollars, but percentage.
Okay, just doing some quick math, as far as the cost as compared to years where maybe there's not as much training that's needed, I mean, it's costing you, you know, maybe $1,000 and change per teacher to be trained, so if you're training multiple teachers, you know, I would say you can, after you get all your initial training done, you would cut probably $20,000 a year off the cost.
Thank you.
Okay. So, moving on to, oh, am I moving, I'm sorry.
I'm not going to hold you to a hot and fast number, but it's a great program. I thought that when we're coming into it, you know, being a project-based teacher for many years, that, you know, it just fed into kind of the mindset that we have at the high school and the middle school, but it's going to have to take buy-in. And what's your sense for the professional staff in terms of the buy-in?
I think, I think the true buy-in occurs once you go to the training, because as some people in my school will attest, I was not sold on it until I saw it in action, until I went to the training, and as soon as I was there for about a day, I said, wow, we need this, we need this bad, and it was, you know, again, I went in, I went in with open eyes and said, I'm going to check it out, but I'm not going to, you know, guarantee this is what we're going to be looking to move in the direction of this program, but when I, when I saw it in action, when I had a chance to speak with fellow administrators that were IB-approved schools, that are handing out IB diplomas, and I got to pick their brains, and then I got to go through the training, I was sold. And speaking with folks that have already come back and gone to the training, and the folks that have done the online training, they're all on board, trust me, and they're very excited. So, it's going to take some time to get everyone on board and to get everyone trained, but I think once they have the opportunity to go through that training, they'll be on board.
What percent of the staff has been trained already, Scott? Ballpark?
I'd say about 15%.
15?
15%. By the end of the summer, we'll be closer to 25, and then...
After November 8th, it'll be 100%.
We'll have 100% trained with the NYPD program, and we don't need 100% trained for the diploma program because there's only going to be a certain number of teachers that will be in that program.
Good, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
All set?
All set.
Okay, so citizenship, obviously, this is a big piece. This is something we strive for, we recognize with awards and so on and so forth, but the big piece that we want to take care of, as you heard in late spring, we had a chance to get the safety policy approved, which has the Alice component to that, so that's a big piece for us. We want to start off training the students in the Alice protocol. We'll have new teachers and teachers that may have missed the training involved on the first day with, with new teachers as they learn about the Alice program. We want to utilize our advisory time to present this to students and to do some dry runs as well, not taking away from learning time. We also, we're always looking to install more cameras. We're moving to the high-def IP cameras, the latest technology which allows us to access the cameras remotely. It also, one high-def IP camera takes the place of three of our old cameras because of the ability to zoom in and zoom out. Once again, we're putting this on for a third year. I hope we can get this done, I think we will this year. Purchase proximity scanner for the custodian's door and back door. I've had some chances to talk with our business administrator, and this is going to be a priority as well. And then the last piece, which hopefully we can get this done, is to add an internet line for security, for the security system. This will allow the police, again, administration to access this remotely without having to worry about firewalls or bogging down a server. This would be, this has its own server at this point in time. We also want to provide opportunities for students to engage in the democratic process, more class elections, we want to continue to do more surveys, you know, the Google survey has, has proven to be a great tool for us at the, at the school. We've done multiple surveys, I've quoted a few of the surveys here, and we want to support open discussions during our advisory periods and continue with the community service for our clubs and our sports. I just want to reiterate that, I know I've mentioned it before, but attendance in discipline data is reviewed weekly at our deans' meetings. We have a meeting every Wednesday, Mr. St. Julian's one of our deans, he's there as well as the other deans, and I think it's important to recognize that a large percentage of our parents felt that students were very safe in our school and in all the schools, for that matter, and I think that's a testament to the fact that we... and in all the schools for that matter. And I think that's a testament to the fact that we have focused as a district and certainly, so I'm speaking for you at the high school, we have focused on, on safety being a priority and we're going to continue to do that. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Looks good.
Yep.
Well, I, I know I've been hopping on it for several years now and, but I do think that one of the, one of the best things that I did down at Sandwich was to develop the student leadership corps. And I got so much mileage out of that in terms of citizenship, in terms of students being proactive in establishing the atmosphere in, in their own school and being active participants in school governance that I, I just, it just took off. And to my knowledge, it's still going strong and they're involved in, in all kinds of aspects in terms of school life. And basically, anyone that held a leadership position on a sports team or a club or a class automatically made them eligible to be part of the student leadership team. We used to have student leadership breakfasts and we had student leadership shirts and we had meetings twice a month, student leadership meetings. Faculty were involved with these student leadership meetings. And I just thought it was a tremendous outlet for building citizenship, citizenship and camaraderie and building a good, solid school community. So again, and it's not, I'm not, you know, advocating this because I did it, but I think it, it's still active down there. And if you want to just find out how they, how it's doing down there. But it was just an amazing way to get kids involved in school community.
Thanks.
And actually, I did it down in Central Falls when I was doing consulting work too.
We, we have a leadership round table that meets, the shared met once each semester, but I, I'll call Ellen and take a look at that. It sounds, it sounds interesting. Thank you.
All set?
Yeah.
All set, thanks. Mr. Swett?
All set, thank you.
The last piece is stewardship and we're going to continue to try and find outside resources and obviously fight for the inside resources to maintain this strategic plan and our school improvement plan. We start, as you all know, the process very early. I think we've done an excellent job as a district and as a school in identifying our capital expenses and our capital needs. And we have more five and seven year plans posted in my office for some very simple things that, you know, such as bubblers and replacement of sinks, painting the school. We're, I'm happy to say we've painted the entire second floor. We're onto the first floor and we anticipate being done, painting the whole school within the next five years. We started this project six years ago. It started as a seven year project. It's turning into closer to an eleven year project. And we always, even if it's just a certain, a small amount, something as simpler, as simple as ink cartridges for the copiers, we send it out to bid. We're always trying to utilize every penny to the best of our ability just to get the best prices. Because if we do save some money on a small bid like that, we can use it somewhere else for the students. So we're going to continue with that stewardship and it's served us well over the years and I hope it continues to do so.
Questions, comments?
Do I have a question?
Sure.
Because this is the last piece. I think this looks great. But my question is, I know that the co-op is moving to your school and the co-op right now is a, a school under Desi. They have their own number.
Correct.
So is that going to continue or are they just going to become a program?
It'll be a school within a school. We will have a person assigned to them as an administrator. That's yet to be determined. They will have, they have their own classroom. I gave them a beautiful classroom right next to the cafeteria. It's very large in size and there's also a tremendous amount of support built into the classrooms around it if it would be needed. I've spent a lot of time with those students. I went over and met with them when the decision was finalized. We have had the students over on two occasions. Once, we brought them over for a motivational speaker. Once, we brought them over for a barbecue and a tour of the school and all the students have received schedules for next year. They have been working in conjunction with our behavioral person, interventionalist, who spends a lot of time over there. So they have familiarity with her. She's housed out of the high school. So I think the majority of the students are very excited. I know there's one or two that are a little apprehensive, but I, but I hope when they get into the door at the beginning of the school year and they see familiar faces and they see the rest of the students in the, in the program, I hope they get excited about it. I know I'm excited to have them there. I was very involved in, in helping to create that program. So I have a, obviously a vested interest and I served as principal there for one year before coming back to the high school. I, I think the unique part about this is we get to offer them electives that they otherwise wouldn't, wouldn't have had. And the majority of the kids are very excited about that and they're very excited to be part of the high school. Most of those kids have never been in the high school.
Right. So I guess my question would be, being its own school, they don't need a school improvement plan?
Well, I guess that's a great question. I think they will after the first year. Hopefully it'll be tied into what we're doing at the high school as well. Hopefully it'll be aligned. But I think after the first year, we'll certainly visit that and, and see how it goes. But I'm excited to have those students there. They were very excited at the barbecue to be part of the high school. They had a lot of great questions and, and we brought back a guest speaker who graduated in the top ten of her class this past year in the graduating class of two thousand sixteen. And she was an eighth, eighth grader and ninth grader at the co-op and received a large scholarship to attend college this coming fall. So she was a great motivational speaker beyond the motivational speaker that I mentioned prior.
Are there anything else?
No.
Well, the only thing I, I've been a big, a, a big supporter of the co-op. And unfortunately, I, I've seen the numbers dwindle in the co-op. And I don't know if this move is going to up the numbers or, or further deteriorate the numbers. But, you know, we just can't be status quo. So I, I'm excited about doing something new. But I kind of agree with Mrs. Morgan on, on the fact that, that we really should have a school improvement plan to find out, you know, what areas where our co-op's school deficient and what areas where they really doing very, very well, both, both sides of the issue. And, you know, what is the plan for the future in terms of the co-op? So I, I don't think that not having a, a school improvement plan for the co-op, you know, right now, based on the current state of the co-op and the direction in which we think it's going to go, that, that would be appropriate. So I don't want to put anything on your plate, but I think it would be appropriate to do a self-analysis on the strengths and weaknesses and how we move forward to co-op.
Sure.
Because I think the co-op is really, really served the need here in Wayham and, and in the area.
Right.
So I, I, I kind of would like to see it continue, the PM program. Now, I know that's a little bit different, but it's still all part of the same package if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. So I'd like to see where we're going on that. I really would. And I don't know if we have a timeline on that, but it would seem appropriate that, that we have a school improvement plan for the co-op.
Great.
So that's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Again, and not to put another finger on your plate.
And if I can mention, we, we have hired one of the teachers from the co-op to work with these students. I know we didn't mention that publicly. It's official now. So I think that's going to help with the transition as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Swett?
All set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd now like to introduce Dr. Peter Steadman to come up.
Thank you again for including me here this evening. It is great and appropriate that I follow Scott here today because our goal in the middle school is to prepare our students for the rigor of the high school. So we plan backward from what we know of the high school and make our adjustments and our calculations from there. So what we hope to do today, starting off on this slide with teaching, is to break it into two parts primarily, looking at differentiated instruction, but also school climate. So when we are going to talk about the school improvement plan and how we can help our administrative team work with the department chairs to help our teachers grow and develop, we are going to ask that the admin team and the department chairs focus on three primary questions and looking at differentiated instruction. The first question is, when talking to your, your faculties, how do you know that every student in that room is actively engaged in the discussion at hand? Two, what do you do with a student who's struggling? And what are you going to do to make sure that student is actively engaged? As you see from the slide, the key is creating an engaging learning environment. So that's going to be our focus. So as I said, the second question is, what do you do with that student who's struggling? How are you going to get that student engaged? What are you going to do with that student who doesn't get it? But of course, the third question is, what are you going to do with the student who gets it too quickly? Because they're all in your classroom. So we are going to try to work on strategies with our teachers to help make sure that they are meeting the needs of all students at Wareham Middle School. The way we will measure that is by our observation system and the admin team that I work with is, has done an excellent job in their observations last year. So we believe that we are navigating from a position of strength. And so we will continue to build upon the observations and the walkthroughs that we did last year. Evidence of that is from the survey. Just want to share some of those with you. The survey indicated that seventy-two percent of the Wareham Middle School faculty indicated that leadership provides feedback and methods to improve learning. Seventy-one percent indicated that teachers and the leadership team work together to ensure that instructional units are continuously improved to support student learning. So we are galvanized by, by those results to move forward. The second piece of, of the teaching, as I mentioned before, is to look at school climate. And part of creating a student centered classroom is to try to develop targeted, intentional conversations to small groups to ensure that we are intentional and clear about what our expectations are in terms of student behavior. So we are also, like Scott said, in the high school, we are also going to be adding Chromebooks and giving out those Chromebooks to students. So with that tremendous amount of possibility comes responsibility. So we are going to try to work with those students in small groups to talk about what does that mean to be responsible for the Chromebook? What does that mean to walk quietly in the hallways? What does it mean to write a respectful email? What does it mean to behave like a Viking in the cafeteria? So this will be measured by reviewing and analyzing student behavioral data, which our admin team does already as well. So that's the first slide.
Questions?
No, I just want to complement the plan. I, I really think that it, it's very incomprehensive in including struggling learners, including all learners, as well as engaging them. And also the measurement of it, I'm a big component, advocate of data, saying that you're collecting data and you're going to be analyzing data. So I complement the plan.
Thank you. I know our admin team spends a lot of time looking at student data. And so we, as I said, we hope to then build upon that area of strength to continue to learn and, and maybe try to find new data points that we can use to the conversation.
Excellent.
Mr. Swett?
Thank you for being here again.
Thank you.
The penultimate issue of The Economist, which is, some people think is the most thoughtful magazine published in the world, had as its cover story, "How to Create a Great Teacher," or something like that. Naturally, I read it. The good news is that I thought I was reading about Wareham in the sense of the things that we are trying to accomplish, they seem to be advocating. It made me feel really good that, that the team that I was supporting really knew what they were doing, at least based on a very thoughtful piece. Not that I, not that I thought that wasn't true, but it was affirmation, shall we say, that we were on the right track. I was surprised in this piece that they made a comment that heterogeneous classrooms were not the terrible thing that people seem to think they are. Nevertheless, the, the term differentiated instruction has to be one of the easiest things to say and the hardest things to do. So, so my question is, and it sounds like you agree with that.
I do.
And it also sounds like it's a big part of what you want to accomplish in the next year is to get even better at differentiated instruction. Do you think, how much of a role does technology play in making that even possible as compared to the extraordinary teacher who can read minds and figure out who's engaged and not engaged and bored and all the rest of that stuff? Because I certainly don't have the capacity to do that.
Great question. I, I think it requires both. I think you need the dynamic, you know, dynamic person in the classroom. But I think the, the key element of differentiated instruction is it's no longer sage on the stage. It's no longer just one person speaking at students and hoping that they will gather all the information. Through the use of technology, you can really create lessons. So you might have a mini lesson to begin the hour, but then you can break students into pods and they can work based on their ability level in mathematics or in English or in science on a specific targeted problem based on their own skill level.
So these are homogeneous pods in a heterogeneous classroom?
Not necessarily. It depends on the problem.
I thought I heard that's what you just, I thought that's what you just said.
Well, the, the thing about that is it depends on the problem that you're hoping to solve, right? That I think in, in the heterogeneous classroom, then you can really mix it up, right? Because the, the students will have different strengths, right? So you will not break them up in entirety, entirety of the entirety of the classroom.
You're saying it's dynamic?
It has to be dynamic. One thing which, I have three daughters and we, we have to be dynamic. We have a lot of competition out there. So in terms, in terms of student engagement and student interest, it has to be moving. You have to get kids up and moving and engage and going from different pods and... But it's, it's a critical piece of the teacher to understand what level that student is at, right? You want to encourage that student to grow and, and push that student. So it's not too easy. It's not too difficult, sort of just right, to make sure that they are making measurable, meaningful progress.
Piece of cake.
Easy.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, let's move along.
The next slide is about academic rigor. And when we were in school, there were three Rs, right? Reading, writing, arithmetic. The three Rs of the 21st century are about rigor, relevance and relationships. And in my opinion, you can't have one without the other. So in trying to build a transformative, student centered experience, you really need all three. We'll begin with looking at academic rigor. The key is to make sure that our admin team is working with the department chairs and the faculty to identify the standards that need to be covered in each unit of study. So, and to make sure that we use those strategies that we talked about in the last slide to make sure that students of all ability levels are able to achieve those specific standards. To make them difficult enough that students can be pushed academically, but also to make sure that those goals are attainable. The next piece is, we want to make sure that we are providing relevance to our students. Because if we are creating problems and it means nothing to them, we will not have buy-in, a word that we talked about earlier this evening. I think the key to measure that piece of, of rigor is that we hope to create specific opportunities throughout the semester, throughout the year, where students will be dealing with a specific 21st century problem, that the students organically have to work collaboratively together to come to a solution. So if it's a problem that they agree upon needs dire, dire focus, whether it's the environment, whether it's water shortages, whether it's a migrant crisis, whatever, we're going to give that back to them. So the plan is that throughout the year, we'll have different opportunities for students to work heterogeneously together on that. And finally, with relationships, if you're going to create this rigor, you have to create relationships. you have to create relationships so students grow. And so we are going to try to work to cultivate relationships in all of our staff with these students to make sure that there's a very strong support system to allow our students to achieve what they hope to achieve. And what we hope to see, the measure for this, is growth data that will be quarterly reviewed, looking at individual student work, allowing them an opportunity to reflect on their own work with the idea that there will be growth involved. So that's it for that slide.
Questions? Mr. Swat?
No, all good, thank you.
Come on, sir. Aaron?
I just want to say that it's nice to hear you bring in relationships because that, especially in the middle school, is huge. And that having, you know, a positive relationship with students is just key to getting them to learn and participate.
One thing I wanted to also mention is that, that you had, the majority of faculty mentioned that our admin team said that "The leadership team supports me in developing skills to manage disruptive behavior in the classroom." It goes along with the idea that our admin team's already beginning to work with teachers to develop these strong skills on relationship building.
Excellent.
So if we get the three Rs right, then we should see it, some real results in terms of assessment, which is the next slide. And we really wish to create a balance of formal and informal assessments to make sure that we understand when you give a summative assessment that the teachers fully understand why they're giving that and what skills are going to be targeted and what standards are going to be targeted, but also, of course, the students understand what those assessments are used for. We therefore will encourage teachers to use both a pre-test to gauge student understanding of the topic at hand, a summative test as well, or assessment, and then also a post-reflection piece, so students and faculty can reflect on the assessment. Of course, then that data will be used to go back to inform our instruction. And it has to be a circular type of relationship, where you are using assessments to guide your instruction, and then those instructions, of course, is informing the assessments you're using. This also has a direct correlation to the type of curriculum that you're writing and the unit plans that you're developing, with the idea that you are changing them and amending them in many ways, real time, to reflect the needs of our students. So when we talk about tracking changes to curriculum based on analysis of student work and assessments, we are hoping that periodically throughout the year, throughout the semester, we'll have meaningful, intentional conversations led by the lead teachers or department chairs with their department about looking specifically at student work, identifying exemplars that can be used in class, put online, shown for everyone to see, so the students are aware of the targets. And also that the different learning styles of the students can be, can be supported as well.
Comments?
Any questions?
Awesome.
What?
All set, thank you.
Jeff?
Only to say that as you're talking, and it's not just you, I think the whole district is moving in this direction. There was a, most people in this room aren't old enough to remember, there was a very famous guy by the name of Edward Deming, who started the whole quality revolution. He died in 1993. But he believed in constantly measuring and then going back and measuring again. And that's the only way you really make progress. I think the job of a teacher is far more difficult than what he tackled, which was manufacturing. But I still think it's applicable, and I love your reference to the quality circle, which is what he would have called it. And I, and I think we're on the right track. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
And finally, looking at leadership and culture. I happened to speak to a parent today, and she said, gosh, her child cannot wait to, again, be involved in the tremendous diversity, variety of student clubs and activities that Wareham Middle School offers. And so, again, we are going to continue to push students beyond traditional classroom learning outside of school, but also give them opportunities, as we mentioned before, of maybe getting out of the classroom a little bit and working on 21st century problems. I would like to create something called, with my admin team, of course, called the Faculty Leadership Council. And the Faculty Leadership Council, or FLC, will be made up of administration, department chairs, guidance counselors, the nurse, and even considering the strength of sports and athletics in this town, maybe even an athletic pair of eyes as well, to meet regularly, to talk about students who might be at risk or who might need some extra care. We might be talking, using that time together to talk about curriculum changes or to talk about safety procedures. But the real focus of this Faculty Leadership Council is to meet regularly, to talk about kids, to attempt to be proactive in this, with the idea that more eyes around a table, talking about our students, is going to be able to give us the opportunity to engage earlier rather than, rather than react. It also, in creating this Faculty Leadership Council, will allow for strategic policies and, of course, the development of a common language in how we're speaking about children, how we're speaking about our practice, and how we're speaking about Wareham Middle School. The way I would measure that, the way we would measure that, is we would get feedback from the Faculty Leadership Council, but also looking at the survey results at semester or at the end of the year from teachers, students, parents, the community, whether they noticed a difference in terms of how leadership engaged and interacted with the community. Again, I believe we are navigating from a position of strength that we had a number of, 68% said the leadership team builds trusting relationships with staff. 80% said together, teachers and the leadership team discuss exemplars of students' work to ensure it's a high standard. I mean, already, the admin team is creating opportunities for people to talk about student work, to talk about kids, and we just hope to build upon that for the strategic plan for the middle school next year.
I just want to say, I like the idea of the Faculty Council. I was actually part of Faculty Council at Minnetonka, and it really was a very beneficial council to have in the school. The other thing that, the only thing that I see missing from all the plans are the people that worked on these plans and not giving them credit for working on the plans. I would like to see that next time that be put in there.
I'm not sure that you were present, so, during the time when this began, the process. So what I'll do is get you all of those documents, because I think somehow you, that's all in those documents that I had referred to earlier. So I will definitely get those to you.
Thank you.
Sure.
No, so this is just like, basically, excuse me, I'm sorry. Had a cold for three weeks. So this is basically the action plan part of the strategic planning process. Correct, correct?
Correct.
So, there's a couple of things that I admire, but there's a couple of things that I think that, I don't know where it would be put in there, to be quite honest with you, or maybe, it probably shouldn't, but. I love the Faculty Leadership Council. We had what we called the Student Assistance Team, Don and Sandwich. And it was, it was, we just talked about kids. But the key to it was we met regularly. And talked about kids and talked about solutions. So it really doesn't matter what you call it, it's all a matter of semantics. But if you're going to talk about kids, going to talk about how we can support kids, you know, and identify what might be bothering these youngsters, I think that's a good thing, as long as we've got the resources to do it. But one of the things that I don't really see popping out at me is that all of this has to be done in an orderly, safe, calm student atmosphere, school atmosphere. And I think that's very, very important. And I just read in the paper about this report that came out on suspensions and, and all of this stuff. I really, I really never had a problem with suspensions. Because for the most part, we have a handbook, we have a code of conduct, and if it calls for a suspension, so be it, it calls for suspension. I never thought that we would be discriminatory in terms of suspensions. But it is very important that whatever we use is a means to provide this order, safe, calm environment, then it'd be done, because all of our best efforts are for naught if we can't provide that for our kids. And I don't know where that can be weaved in there, but I think that's very important.
Thank you.
All set?
Yep, thank you.
Mr. Swat?
Just a quick question for Dr. Schwam. What I'm looking at on my screen, which was sent this afternoon, is different than what I'm looking at on this screen. And this looks like it's a augmented version. My question is, excuse me?
I was under the impression that you received the latest version of the many versions that were on my desktop.
So it's close, but it's not identical. So I just have a request that you should know that we didn't get the latest version. And if you could send it, because I think it's a great document, I would appreciate it.
I would be curious to look at that, because the version that I had placed on here was the version I sent to all of you, so I have to take a look. I will, because I don't know how.
Are you questioning my ability to read?
No, I'm just questioning, it was just a very complicated process, but I'll definitely take a look.
It may have been taken as a complaint, but it was just taken, please take it as a request.
I do.
Just a request.
No problem.
Okay.
What's up?
Yes, thank you.
I'd just like to make one quick statement, and that is, thank you very much for working as diligently as you have for a very short period of time to get this done, so we could have this presentation this evening. Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Schwam. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you, and I had a lot of help from my team, thank you.
And your administrative team.
Thank you.
All of you out there, Sandy, Dan.
Tracy.
Tracy.
Tracy. Lucky if I see anybody.
Good evening.
Joan, what was yours?
I'd like to thank the members of the Faculty Council and my admin team, as well as, I know, Deacon's for Elementary that could be here this evening in support. So when we're looking at mine, for us, teaching and learning, keeping in mind that vision that we have for the district of innovative learning and coming outside of the traditional classroom, we too are moving forward with some new models. So we're looking at that student achievement, those challenging expectations, increasing student engagement. Well, what does that look like? We want to make sure that we're measuring that by the walkthroughs that we're doing. We are looking at the student engagement from the piece of what are the students doing? But also, when we looked at the survey results, we also want to see that the students are also helping each other. And that was one of the things that we found that we want to work on. Peer communication came up in the surveys as well. So the students do a good job explaining their work, and when you, the teachers were working with them, they can keep going. And one of the statements I love reading in the student survey was, "I've learned not to give up even when things get difficult." And that goes along with those challenging expectations. And that's what we're promoting for our students. So we also want to look at exemplar works. The teachers do a great job of using rubrics, and the students know how they can score their points. But now what we want to do is show them, what does an exemplar work look like? And we're going to be continuing on with that piece. And that's just part of giving the expectations for the students. That's the expectations that the leadership team has to give to the teachers. What are we looking for when we walk into a classroom? And the survey results also show the students need to know what we're looking for when we walk into the classroom. Some of the new models is the blended learning model, combining the in-class instruction with online instruction. And we were very fortunate this year that we did have the one-to-one Chromebooks. And they were used every day by staff, by teachers, by a technology teacher. We're also implementing team teaching. So again, getting away from that traditional teaching, you won't just have a third grade teacher teaching all four subjects. We're teaching in terms of trios, three teachers on a team together. Grade four, we have trios, we have a duo. We'll be using our walkthroughs to look at those models, to see how it's working, to make tweaks as we need to. The teachers are very appreciative that they're able to take these risks and we're supporting them. And that's building a trusting relationship with them. And that was another issue on the survey that came out, was they appreciated the fact that they could do that. We know that with new models, we have to continue to give them professional development. So we had some teachers that went to Rhode Island last year, and they looked at what blended learning looked like in the classrooms. And they came back and they were very excited and started implementing that. Team teaching is also something we have to look at. So this year, in one of my grade four teams, there were three teachers that did a trio model. And they worked through it throughout the year, and they presented at a staff meeting how it worked for them. What worked, what didn't work. So we're using our own staff to give our own professional development, because we have teachers that have some great experiences, and they're sharing that with their colleagues and sharing best practices. And I think we have to tap into the experiences of our staff as well. Case management meetings is something that we started towards the end of the year. And when you look at students being engaged and raising that student achievement, we have to make sure all students are focused, and we have to make sure the teachers are able to teach what they need to teach. So the case management meetings would be the assistant principals, it could be the nurse, it could be the social worker, it could be the guidance counselor, having weekly or bi-weekly meetings and just sharing student concerns and really brainstorming what we need to do for these students. We're looking at school-wide programs, peer mediation. We were very fortunate to have a social worker added to Minnetonka Forest this year. And she has done such an amazing job of outreach with families that it has made a tremendous impact on our students. So she's also looking at implementing some programs with some of these specialized classrooms that we have. Collaboration was one of the issues that came up with our staff as being a concern. So we made sure we took care of that, and we already have collaboration time built into their schedule. They receive their schedules before they left last week, and that was something new. We made sure the schedules were done, we have tentative class placements so they could look at that. And once a week, they'll have collaboration time during the day, so we're not relying solely on those Tuesday after-school times, because those are gold. And we need them as an administrative team with the staff, but they also need time with their own peers. And especially with some of these new models, we want to make sure they have that collaboration time and that time to talk. So again, with some of the surveys, the students felt the teachers really do help make better choices when students are misbehaving, and I was pleased to see that. And as a leadership team, we'll continue to work on that. Questions on the first slide?
Jeff?
Joan, I appreciated the fact that your staff liked the fact that you created an environment where taking risks was okay, you know? But I am curious as to, could you describe one or two of the risks that are being taken?
Well, for instance, in my grade three team, they've never taught as a trio before. They have done the traditional, I teach all four subjects a day. So now they're working with colleagues. And students will be going back and forth between classrooms. One teacher might teach math, one teacher might teach reading. So that's something different for them, and that is, they're excited to do it. They're hesitant to do it because it's new, and it's a, it's a challenge for them because it's new. But we're, we will be there to support them through this whole process.
I seem to recall Dr. Sylvia talking about this maybe a decade ago. Great, thank you.
So I just want to say I love the idea of the team teaching, and that's something probably a decade ago I talked about too, because working in the middle school, I saw how because working in the middle school, I saw how the children struggled with the transition. And then having this now earlier as team teaching is really going to help with that transition to the middle school, as well as allowing the teachers to focus in more intensely on that subject area or that topic.
That's correct.
And then hopefully, with the team teaching, they'll also integrate as, you know, the subject areas work together to create maybe projects or whatnot to, that will each touch on the areas that they're teaching.
Moving on?
I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Accountability.
Specialization's always better.
Accountability and assessment. So, assessment is something that we do throughout the year. There's formal ways of assessing students, there's informal ways of assessing students. Obviously, we have the FAST assessments that we do three times a year. We want to be able to look at that data, we do look at it. We have data meetings with teachers. And from those data meetings, we're looking at what interventions our students need, and what interventions do we need to give to those students who need to be challenged? So, more of the accelerated learning. We're also trying a different model this year, where we'll have one of the trios, where the Title I reading specialist will be going into the classroom. It's more of a push-in model rather than a pull-out model. So, she'll be kind of concentrated on one particular trio. So, we've been very strategic in placing students for next year. So, we're excited to try that model out. Again, these collaboration meetings for staff, they need that time to share the information, how things are going, especially when they have students flowing in and out of their classrooms. So, we'll make sure that they have that. And the data team that we'll have will be constantly using the data to talk about it. We also know that when we have students that we have plans for, we have to progress monitor them. So, there's a tool in FAST that we can use to do that. So, we want to keep on top of our students who are at risk, providing those interventions, constantly using that data and updating it to see if they've made the progress that we expect them to make.
Just said, I love the idea of the Title I being pushed into the classroom, and it really allows the Title I teacher to be connected more to the classroom to be able to teach the students more appropriately.
And we feel it would be a more effective use of her time.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and that's at both grade levels, three and four.
Right.
You're next.
I agree with Mrs. Morgan. I like the idea of the, using the Title I teacher and infusing them into the classroom. However, what you said does give me a little bit of a problem. If the Title I teacher's going to be placed into a trio, are we identifying one trio as a problem trio?
Not a problem. We, we have certain teachers with various strengths. No, it's not a problem at all. We're relying on some.
You know what I'm talking about. Is it going to be a gifted trio and a not-so-gifted trio?
No, not at all. It's very fluid, these students, they're moving in and out. It's not just one classroom that's been identified, we wouldn't do that. So, the students are moving back and forth. She's just having more flexibility in the amount of classrooms that she can go into.
Okay, so she could go into either, if there were three trios, four trios, whatever the case may be, pick and choose when the time and place.
And it's more of her going in rather than she being in one place, and the students are coming to her.
I understand.
Yeah.
That's great, thank you. You can understand why I was bothered by that.
Absolutely.
No more, thank you.
Jeff?
Hi, was looking to see if I could find it. Thought I saw it when I reviewed it earlier today. Where does competency, mastery-based education fall into your plan for next year?
So, that was, that was at the beginning. It'll be worked in as we go forth, so that's one of the new areas that we're exploring. And that's something that Mrs. Murphy is looking into.
Say that again?
That's something that Mrs. Murphy is focusing on for next year as well.
So, is it going to be implemented next year? And how would a parent be aware of it?
We'll be able to answer that question really much more accurately. We'll be attending a three-day professional development in New Hampshire where they have integrated this competency-based education model completely into their whole district and have done phenomenally well. So, there's a team of five of us going up there from each subsequent school to learn about what it is they are doing and how they are determining competency and what that looks like and what that means per standard and so forth. So, we're going to slowly begin that process. And one of the plans is to begin to collect the assessments we currently have here and do because the work being done here is excellent. So, instead of having to redo that work, having that access to that, we'll begin the process of us determining what actually, what actually says that the student is ready to move on? And how do we determine that based on the assessment and the standard?
You, you agree this is a big deal?
It's huge.
Yes.
This is, this is a long, but very worthwhile process.
And is it primarily focused K through four?
It's, no.
No?
No, it's across the district.
Across the district?
We're starting with, we're starting K to four, but we've also started discussing, having quite a lot of discussions with the middle school department chairs. We're very excited about this opportunity, and, and we also started to discuss that at the high school. The technology is actually opening up that opportunity for us that we might not otherwise have had if we didn't have the technology.
So, so, I would be better off waiting for a future presentation on this important topic?
Yes, it's pretty complicated.
Thank you.
For leadership and culture, looking at the global literacy, we want to utilize our connections in the community. We had a great program this year with junior achievement. And we use two different models. So, in third grade, they came throughout the year, and they visited the classrooms. And the volunteers, and I believe they were from Santander Bank, came and taught lessons in the third grade, whereas in grade four, we had one day, Junior Achievement Day. And the volunteers came and they took over teaching the classrooms that day. And the teachers loved it, and the students loved it. So, we're looking to continue that, the junior achievement program. With the blended learning, we had some students, some teachers that piloted that last year. We're hoping that we can expand that. So, sending more teachers out to visit the, the schools in Rhode Island, say, that have that if they're interested, again, that risk-taking, building that trusting relationship with them. That, that has to be said over and over again. They have to be able to trust the leadership team is going to allow them to take these risks, and we do. We also want to continue that partnership with Beijing, China. We were very fortunate, mine at Forest, that we had two visits from two elementary principals. We had two groups of students that came, one right towards the end of the year. The students were great. We have teachers that are going soon over to China, in the next week or two. And then I'll be fortunate enough that I'll be going over with some other staff members and Dr. Shaverhood to China to learn from them as well. So, it's not just China we're developing sister-city partnerships with, but it's others. So, we're giving, kind of bringing the global education to the students. And I love that we have this global education team that's a big part of the way in public schools. So, we never want to give up. We're going to keep going. We'll be looking at establishing a student council slash principals advisory council, and this is something new that we'll be looking at. We want to listen to student viewpoints, and that was one of the things in the survey that came up. The students, as I mentioned earlier, they do well explaining their own thinking, but maybe doing some peer editing, and that would take some teaching by the teachers. But that was one thing in the surveys came up that maybe we can focus on. And that's something we can listen from the students to hear not just concerns they may have with, with their peers, but how can we help them with their learning? And I think that's a piece that we have been missing, active listening. When I finish my work, how can I be challenged? That's another piece that we'll work on with teachers and with students. And I think I heard that from you earlier, Mrs. Morgan, about the students that need to be challenged. So, we're excited to continue this piece.
So, that looks great. One question that came to my mind about the team teaching. So, is there actually going to be team time during the week at all, or?
Yes, we have worked out a specialist schedule, so they have one period together for the week. And then whatever after-school time we can give on those late days on Tuesdays, we'll give to them as well.
Okay.
Jeff?
All set, thank you.
And the last one, the stewardship infrastructure. You know, we're going through the feasibility study process. We, Dr. Shaverhood has formed the building committee. And tentatively on July 9th, the portables are scheduled to be demolished. So, the building is going to look different. But I'm really looking forward to going through this process and keeping everyone informed as we go forward.
It's definitely needed.
All set? Jeff? Joan, thank you very much. Thank you to your able staff. Good evening, Donna.
Good evening. Well, I want to thank my colleagues because I think if you look at the piece that maybe Scott started with about developing good citizens, and then the part that Pete talked about with regard to developing relationships with students, then the part that Joan talked about, about team teaching and meeting kids where they learn. I think that for our school, you could really take a piece of all of those and really say that it all starts at the very foundation of learning in the K to two school, and that we will do pieces, I think I just lost the mic, that we will do pieces of that all the way through. I do have a very close relationship with Mrs. Siemens and the staff over at mine at school, so I think in many ways, we parallel the work that's being done. You'll hear me talk about team teaching as well, you'll hear us talk about working with a community program such as junior achievement. So, in some ways, this may be a little bit of an echo piece for our school, but I'm certain that you'll see some uniqueness as we go through these slides as well. On the first slide, we can talk about our Focus K2 program. So, right now, that is a program that is unique to the DCA school. We have had our kindergarten teachers trained and have implemented a full unit of study with the children. And the Focus K2 curriculum comes to us out of Boston Public Schools, and all of our teachers were fortunate to be trained. And we also have ongoing professional development, both with in-district personnel, as well as Steve McCanna, who comes to us as a retired principal but working with the DESE on this project. So, we have that embedded professional development in practice, so that's helping to make the program successful. And I can say that it is a project-based learning approach for kindergartners. And we see them engaged that truly, when you walk inside of a kindergarten classroom and they're in the middle of their unit of study on animal habitats, children will be actively engaged in different areas, whether it be blocks, building their arrangement of nests in, to show you what they've learned about that structure, or whether they're over in a writing center and writing about what they've learned. We've seen since the implementation of Focus K2, a drop-off in discipline referrals at the kindergarten level. And we've also seen an increase particularly in the area of student writing. So, all of these things, I think, are powerful outcomes that will come as a result of this project-based learning approach. The first-grade teachers, as recently as today, met with a group of the kindergarten teachers, there were 12 of them, who sat together to talk about how do we continue this piece that our kindergartners have been using and implement it into our first-grade classroom, given that the first-grade Focus K2 program rolls out pretty much in January. That's when they'll receive their training. But what we didn't want to do is have this lag time between the spring of kindergarten and, and the winter to spring of first grade. So, those teachers are actively meeting and working with each other to connect that and provide the structure within their classrooms so that it's a smooth transition for children. So, looking at teaching and learning, I would say that, you know, the Focus K2 program has been a substantial part of what we're doing and will continue to be in the three years, you know, it's a three-year plan to roll it out to first grade next year and then second grade the year beyond. Children get to, I guess, a piece over that I'll mention too, under the measured, is they, they certainly have student works that they will be making through this process as well as in other academic areas. And they get to share those student works in what we call a student learning expedition. We've talked about that at a prior time, but that's when community members, high school students from the honor society, come and join us. And then students are able to individually speak with an adult and share something that they're particularly proud of. As a result of their sharing, they actually receive a postcard home to their families as well, thanking them for, for showing us what they've learned at school. Questions on that slide?
Where are we in terms of pre-K and kindergarten readiness as a district? Or actually, it would be our school?
It's hard to hear you.
Where, where are we at the pre-K or kindergarten readiness in terms of the district?
What we experience is that children come in certainly with a range of knowledge. For some children, they're perhaps already reading really beginning-level books. Other children aren't recognizing the letters in their name yet. So, certainly, teachers are meeting them where they're at, but I would say that's diverse across all of the classrooms.
And do we have any strategies to, to try to close that gap?
Certainly. There are, there's assessments. We go through the FAST assessment as well as other teacher assessments that we do, certainly in the beginning of the year, the middle of the year, end of the year. And then we do that ongoing progress monitoring that goes along with the FAST assessment. And we design our intervention groups accordingly so that children that don't have those experiences have repeated introductions to the material that they need. But at the same time, children who are more capable and able to do that already are in their small groups, getting the material at the level that they need as well. That's done at kindergarten level as well. And I'll speak to the team teaching piece because while we had some teachers pilot that model this year, we will be moving towards a partnership between teachers and in a couple of cases, some trios. Same thing in that we can look at a classroom of students and imagine that there's 20 students in that class. Well, now there's another 20 with a neighboring teacher, but perhaps you may have two or three really high readers who are ready to launch into a chapter book. And that other teacher may have two or three as well. This will allow us the configurations to move students between classrooms and to better meet their needs, both at the high-achieving end, in the middle of the range, and for those that are struggling. Right, and, and our project is, is a connection with the Focus K2.
I was going to ask about that. And I also know that we have a grant, Coordinated Family Engagement Grant, that, where we do outreach. Family, we do, we have a Coordinated Family Engagement Grant that, where we do outreach to children that are not currently in programs before kindergarten. So, they, we're trying to expose them, give them resources, families' resources as well. So, I know that there is outreach going on there.
Approximately two weeks ago or so, I went and spoke at, at the Head Start classroom. They had invited me to come and share with parents things that we were doing in our kindergarten program by way of helping with the readiness of their students. And I was happy to be able to attend that evening and to speak with parents and to meet some of our children.
Thank you.
Jeff?
So, you did, you are aware that the school committee passed a policy regarding animals being brought into the schools? And I just wondered just how many animals were used as a part of this animal habitats project?
At this current time, only ones that are stuffed.
Stuffed?
Just stuffed animals. Teddy bears, no.
I have a problem with stuffed animals.
No, no, at this point, that's what I've seen that has come on in. We, our children dissected owl pellets, for example, and that was one. Owl, owl pellets? It certainly is. And I would imagine that nearly every kindergartner would tell you what regurgitation is now.
Delightful, thank you, Mrs.
You're welcome. Okay.
Okay, moving to the second slide. Our second action step is, revolves around developing, well, increasing the amount of technology and access to technol- We continue to warrant and desire professional development for teachers so that we can fully utilize the technology that we have, the document cameras, the overhead projectors, the interactives, the smart boards. So, we will be looking at some additional professional development in those areas just to, to keep current and to keep them fully utilized and to, you know, of, of course, in, in this field, things are changing rapidly. So, what is here today and then what is here again two months from now quickly changes and we're able to introduce new and exciting applications and concepts to students. We are very fortunate in that our PTA recently did the Booster-Thon fundraiser, the fun-run, and I can report that between both mine at and DECA school, whoops, sorry, approximately $40,000 was raised. And that money will be used for both technology and for playground equipment.
Second?
And that will help us substantially.
Mark, look.
Questions on that slide?
All set. All set? Yes.
Next.
I think you just, yes, that one. No, that one, we just hadn't talked. No, we didn't. We just talked about technology. You went ahead. This is multiple methods of assessment. Okay.
All right.
We're good. Then the next slide is regarding the multiple methods of assessment. Student, it's important for students to take ownership of their own learning. So, teachers are incorporating reflection surveys. They are asking them, and through our recent student survey, we asked them how they were feeling about everything from are they safe at school to do their teachers, ask them questions about what they're learning. When we asked our students these five, the series of five questions, they were asked, they did that in the computer lab and they did that with a drop-down menu of yes and no. It was fascinating to watch 680 students that were five and six and seven years old responding to a survey. But they're certainly able, certainly able to tell us what they like and what they think they do well and what they need help with. So, it's important to involve them in the process. And then obviously, we want to get parents engaged in the assessment process and that we share information about their children as learners with them on a regular basis. And then for teachers, that we're always looking at different ways of assessing children and reporting back on those different modes and that, so that the children have a chance to express themselves in different ways. So, whether it's the Focus K-2 project-based assessment or whether it's a paper pencil task, you're giving children a, a range of opportunities to express what they know. Anyone?
Mary?
Just, it sounds great and it's nice to hear you talk about the parent connection there because that's so important, especially at the early age, to have a positive, you know, beginning with the parents for the school.
I think that's an area that we've done some work in. And, and we are, are always trying to actively get them to participate, whether it be in a classroom presentation, whether it be at our recent Bring a Book to the Beach Day. We wanted to promote summer reading, so we invited all parents to come to school and go out into our, go onto the DECA's beach, AKA the DECA's field. And they shared in reading with them. They made some bookmarks for the summer. They were handed out some summer resources of books to read. There was a little raffle. And then we had, the hit was the trading pools. And children brought in books to donate to these small kiddie type, oops, sorry, kiddie-type pools. And every child was able to take home a new book for the summer.
That's great.
All set. Jeff?
The one piece of data I've seen showed a remarkable level of increased achievement of kids who've gone through preschool and those that had not. Now, admittedly, it was third-grade MCAS data for what, for whatever that's worth, but it was still remarkable in, in, in what it demonstrated. Do, anecdotally, just your own experience and your faculty's experience, is it, is it a fair statement that there's a significant difference when you've got a kid who's been through pre, pre-K as, as compared to a, a student that is not?
I, I think every child's experience is different. I would say that the majority of our children do have some form of pre-K experience, whether it's in our public school or whether it's in a private pre-K. So, whether it's been a daycare that maybe wasn't so academically focused or whether it is an academic program, that might make a difference. So, it's hard to really separate what was a more academic.
The data I was looking at was specifically the work that Joan does. So, I, I assume, I know that's academically oriented, whereas I don't know what the other is.
Right.
And interestingly enough, the data was really significantly superior, even though a very high percentage were, were special education, meaning twice the normal average, like 40 percent. What, what does it cost a family to send their kid to, to pre-K? Because right, we all know the state is being pressured to make it something that's available to all students, but right now, it's something that just simply costs a family, correct?
Yeah, it's sliding fee. Mrs. Tobin?
So, for students on IP, they.
No, I, I realize that.
For our peers, it's $10 a session. So, last year, student, all our peers came for four sessions, so it was $40 a week. So, it's also a sliding scale, which will reduce to $5 a session, or some families are free.
And do we market it?
Yes, we advertise for it.
We do. Does it, does that seem to work?
So, when we have, we schedule our screening, we do peer screenings periodically throughout the year, we advertise for that. And our screening appointments are usually full, they come one right after we start.
Well, you seem to be doing a really good job. I wish everybody had the opportunity.
Yeah.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Under leadership and citizenship, we talk about empowering, exciting and, exciting and actively engaging students in their own learning and in their community. We have, sorry, I need to, we have recently signed a memorandum, memorandum of understanding with a, a school in Beijing, China. And I had the opportunity to meet with the principal from that school as well as some of the staff and students. They visited DECA's school and, and spent the day, some of the students spent a few days in our classrooms. And some of our families hosted the children in their homes. We are always looking to develop community connections. We have mobile dentists come in, we have someone from the nutrition department come in and teach some classes. And we have connections with historical, historical, what am I looking for? Yeah, but the, the, the different, the age.
I apologize.
Yeah, it's not the Historical Society. It's the Historical Center in town. And we're able to send, yeah, sorry, we're able to send some of our students there for visits, the library, the fire department. This is our way of pulling in resources to our children so that they can learn more about what our community has to offer. So, not our community as well as then on the bigger global picture when we do the outreach to places like China or Skype with different authors or look at, you know, developing some of these connections that we have with the Focus K-2. We might be looking at, you know, marine connections when we talk about animals by contacting Woods Hole. So, it's those kinds of community connections that are making the learning come alive for students.
That sounds great.
Our next slide talks about having an environment where students feel safe and supported. Our survey indicates that we want to work to find ways to support students that aren't making effective progress. It's always resources and, you know, whether they be personnel or whether they be financial resources that sometimes dictate what we are able to do, but our job is to think creatively about how do we use the resources we have to meet student needs. So, to that end, we're developing a consultation model. That is some work that Mrs. Miranda has done along with our behaviorist. And the behaviorist goes into a classroom, works with teachers to model strategies. They implement whether those are working, they assess their effectiveness, and they may need to redesign. So, we're always looking at ways to use the resource personnel that we have to try to stretch it further and to help to get to all of the students who might exhibit a need. We're going to be all learning about the social thinking curriculum. There's professional development that will be done throughout the year. And certainly, we can do some building-based reinforcement as well. So, we'll be doing some professional development school-wide on the social thinking. We're looking to develop a resource guide so that we have a school-wide common language. And by that, I mean words like whether it's expected behavior or unexpected behavior, what hallway behavior is, what lunchroom behavior is, what are classroom expectations. So, we're looking at providing a resource guide to all teachers that gives out that vocabulary and then there's some model lessons to do so that everyone, so that there's some consistency throughout the school. We are also looking to do some of that work through a social emotional learning committee.
Turn me over.
The, the next slide talks about.
Hold on, we got a question on this slide. Go ahead.
There is, I, I think we have to, and I, I admire everyone's efforts. And I admire the dedication we have to support those students that are both socially or academically struggling. But I, I honestly feel that we have to lay the atmosphere and the foundation and the expectation that these students need to be not only supported by the school and school programs, but by their parents. And the expectation has to be that the parents are part of the solution, even though some of them are part of the problem. But they have to be, become part of the, of the solution. And I, I think that we have to develop an atmosphere, system-wide, district-wide, that the expectation is that parents will be part of the solution. And I think that we, we, we have a tendency to try to take it all on by ourselves. We have a tendency to have the schools solve all the problems and the districts solve all the problems. And the expectation is really, I don't think that the expectation has been clearly articulated to the community, that parents are part of this problem. They're part of the problem and they have to be part of the solution. And I think we really have to do a better job at making parents part of the solution.
I think this in part goes back to what Dr. Stedman said when he talked about relationships because we're not only talking about relationships with the students, but we're talking about relationships with the parents as well. And particularly for our youngest learners, a five-year-old may need to be explicitly taught some skill that they may not already have. And we're not going to do that alone, we're going to need to do that with the parents' help. So, I think building those bridges, making, having opportunities for parents to come into school for social events, for sharing of their students' work makes them more comfortable to ca, come in or to have a conversation when someone picks up the phone and calls them and says, "I'd like to talk to you about a situation that happened today." I know that if I see a student in my office or if I'm in a classroom and I, and I'm dealing with a student that may have had, you know, needed some correction, that I'm on the phone making that, you know, call to the parent to say, "Just want you to know that I had this," even if it's a minor-type situation because tomorrow, that could be bigger if that's not checked today. So, I, I think, you know, I commend the entire administrative team for making those connections with parents and calling them into school, having those multiple conversations because it isn't just one conversation and done. It's, here's the conversation, now what's the plan? How are we going to have that corrective action so that it sticks and that we're not dealing with this problem next week or the week after that?
Very good.
So that we really eliminate it.
Very good. I want to feel a bit more comfortable about having the parents as part of the, part of the solution.
And part of it too is also.
Mary?
Oh, that's.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm done.
Sorry. Part of it too is also engaging the outside agencies as well to refer, you know, to help them, parents find agency, the outside agencies that can help as well. So, having more like a wraparound-type service.
Right. And we're fortunate to have the services of our school psychologists, our guidance counselor, and we will have a 20-hour-a-week intern, social worker next year that will help us out as well.
That's great.
All set. Jeff?
All set, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. We're on, this is the last one. We have one. Yeah. And just, one point on the last one was just that we want to make sure that we have opportunities for our children to do community service because I think that when they know that we will all help and support and service them, but they also need to, at this very young age, take on their role and responsibility as being a contributing member of their community. So, we're looking for a minimum of three community service projects for next year. And then we obviously are working with the MSBA on our Roof and Boiler Project, and we will be ever so grateful when that work is complete.
We all will.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you to all the people who showed up in support of the people who spoke. Thank you.
Folks, I'd like to take something out of order here and make sure that we get this done tonight. And that is the vote on the collective bargaining agreement with Unit C. So, if you don't mind, I would like to move to that and then we go back to the handbooks.
Are we done with the student improvement plans? Is this done? The school improvement plans are done?
Yes.
Okay. I'll.
Okay. We had negotiated with Unit C. I would like to thank all the Educator Association with Unit C who were involved in the negotiations, certainly appreciate all their time and effort. The Unit C Association voted and accepted the memorandum of agreement. I would, I brought this to you last meeting for your review. I would ask at this point, you vote to approve the memorandum of agreement. It will be a three-year contract. The pay scale will be 2.5 in the first year, 2.5 in the second year, third year. It also addresses bringing in speech-language OTPT into the assistance into the bargaining agreement. And at this time, I would ask for you to vote to approve the memorandum of agreement for Unit C.
There are a motion to approve MOU on Unit C. Some move?
Second?
Second it.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0-0.
And I'd like to thank you because all of our Units C work extremely hard, they're dedicated to our school, to our, our students, and we appreciate all that they do.
Thank you. Okay. What I'd like to do is let's go back to the handbooks. I mean, we have.
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, just, even though legally, we don't need to vote on the school improvement plans, we have done this in the past as a sign of support for the school improvement plans for the record, and I think that we should continue that, that protocol.
Individually or as a whole?
Any way you want to do it, but I just think that for the record, we should have a vote on that.
All right. May I have a motion to accept the school improvement plans as a whole?
Some move?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to see whether we can get through these handbooks. And I think that we received the revisions.
Yes. And the changes.
Revisions and.
And I'd like to thank you, because all of our Unit C work extremely hard, they're dedicated to our school, to our students, and we appreciate all that they do.
Thank you. Okay. What I'd like to do is let's go back to the handbooks. I mean, we have...
Mr. Chair?
I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, just, even though legally we don't need to vote on the school improvement plans, we have done this in the past as a sign of support for the school improvement plans for the record, and I think that we should continue that, that protocol.
Individually or as a whole?
Any way you want to do it, but I just think that for the record, we should have a vote on that.
All right. May I have a motion to accept the school improvement plans as a whole? Some move?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. I would like to see whether we can get through these handbooks. And I think that we received the revisions...
Yes, and the changes.
Revisions and changes.
To the elementary, high school, and the district. We will be bringing you the middle school after Dr. Stedman has had some time to look at it and review. We thought we'd just push him over the edge if we'd asked for all this.
Couldn't do that in three days, huh?
I thought there was a...
Got a big red ass under that shirt. So district handbook.
Yes. Before you, you've had the changes. The majority of the changes on the district handbook really refer to the updated policies that have been added, adjusted during the school year. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer any questions at this time. And if not, I would be asking for approval of the district handbook.
Some move? Second?
Second it.
Questions, comments? Jeff?
Well said, thank you.
Mary?
No.
Beth?
No, I, no comments. I just don't like doing it this way. I don't like getting something a couple of days and having a bunch of changes, not having any presentation on the rationale for the changes, no rationale. It just, I just don't like pushing things through this way. I'm sorry. I just don't like it. I mean, if we're going to have, I mean, I've got two pages of changes here in the elementary book, I've got two pages of changes in the high school book, we've got two pages of changes, actually three pages of changes on the district book, and we're going to vote to accept it? I just don't like operating like this. Sorry.
Put this off to another meeting, and we have individual presentations of the handbook.
I hate to bring these guys back, but I, I mean, we need to, we need to have some, some input and some rationale for the changes. And I don't, and probably 90%, 99% of these changes I would agree with, but I just don't like getting given, being given a couple of days to digest this and then all of a sudden ask to vote on it. Now, if, if, I got the administrators here right now, if they want to go through it right now, give me the rationale for the changes.
You ready to go?
That's fine. Rather than bring them back another night.
Fine. Let's do it that way.
We have a motion on the district handbook at the moment, so...
Would you withdraw the motion, please?
Sure.
And a second.
High school?
High school.
Oh, was I right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to thank our staff who had input in this, our school council, our student leadership team, department heads. I want to thank Ms. Freitas for spending time with the committee, but also going through this, and also all of the deans that have been involved. I believe you have the changes in front of you, and we'd certainly like to go through each of those and explain the change and the rationalization for that, yes?
Is this change the one that says, starts on page five?
Correct. These are just the changes. You should also have the handbook that should have been sent to you as well.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I got those.
Okay. So certainly, if you have any questions, please stop us, but we'll try and go through this as quickly as possible. But we, on page five, we're just adjusting to what the district is doing in regards to notification on snow days. Everyone gets a Global Connect call. Those are the four TV stations that we report to. On page seven, flip-flops have been removed from the standard of dress code, and you can see the documentation there, that's there on page seven. Spandex, I think, are something of the 80s. I haven't seen spandex in the school in a long time, so we removed that from page seven, part F. Something that we have done for seniors for many years now is if they have higher than an 80 average, they're allowed to not take their final exams and their final grade counts as their exam grade. We have been doing this for semester-two courses, and we felt it wasn't fair to seniors for semester-one, so we have incorporated that into the handbook, where if they take a half-year course, they do not have to take their final exam if they have an 80 or above. This helps out tremendously in the spring with what is traditionally called the senior slide. We don't see that because the students want to push to the end because of this policy.
So, so seniors are not going to be taking exams if they have an 80 or above either semester?
Either semester, correct. The language was semester-two in the past.
Because we have semester courses.
Because seniors take semester courses, correct.
So in essence, if a senior has an 80, they want to take any final examinations?
Correct.
Their senior year.
Correct.
And you think that that's wise?
It's been a great policy. It really has. We have had very few issues with attendance, discipline, poor grades, because the seniors want to drive right through to the last day. It's definitely a great policy.
Okay.
On page 12, there's just some reworked language in regards to the guidance center, and just some language in regards to making sure the students understand the drop-add period for changing classes. Certainly entertain any questions you have on that language.
You mean there's a timeline for changing classes?
Correct.
Okay.
Just some language on page 12 in regards to the library, in regards to food and drink, procedure for entering, the copier that's available for students, and just what we're trying to do with the new materials being brought in. Page 13, because we're as close to real-time as possible in regards to Power School, we have not done progress reports in quite some time. It's worked out well, so we wanted to take that language out of the handbook. And also with the schedule, we want to make sure that we document that all students have to take eight subjects unless authorized by the principal. And then page 13, we just adjusted the MCAS exams to the new schedule that Desi recently sent out. Page 15, requirements for participation for athletics, and we also identify that this is the same requirements as we mentioned in school committee for extracurricular activities. Page 17, we just, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. On page 14, you added extracurricular, you said?
No. Page 15...
It says 14 on our...
Oh, I'm sorry. We had, I think Rochelle can attest to this, we had different, on different computers, different pages it lined up. It is, it is page 15 on my copy, but it was going back and forth with the formatting between different programs. But basically, for participation, the, we wanted the same criteria for extracurricular as we approved at school committee...
That's good.
For both sport, athletics and extracurricular. All students are held to the same requirement.
Okay.
So page 17, we talked about absenteeism to be allowed to participate. We really just wanted to clean this up a little bit. We had some concerns. We had a snow day before a long weekend, and we wanted to make sure we cleaned this up as far as the expectation on a full day, what time students need to be in by to get credit, and what student, what time students could be dismissed by to be eligible for any extracurricular activity. On page 21, we just cleaned up the language on field trips.
Was it always 12:00 PM?
I think it used to be a little earlier. It was, I believe it says they have to be in for half a day to be, to be eligible, but we wanted to move it up a little bit. Half a day used to be like, I think, 11:30.
And it has to be a legitimate reason for dismissal?
Correct.
Such as?
Doctor's appointment.
Okay.
Page 21, field trips, just reiterating, you know, our internal policy of the fact that teachers have the final say whether students can go, students have to be in good academic standing, and no trips can be planned during the week of exams, obviously, MCAS testing. And there's also, we do ask for it to be scheduled two weeks in advance and approved by myself, and then we try and send out a week before the trip notification to the staff, just to give them that courtesy. Page 22, we just wanted to have it identify that we do charge $25 for parking permits. We've always had, you know, parking permits in the handbook, but we felt it was important to identify the cost. The policy for school dances has always been, students need to give us the student's name at least, I believe it's a week before the dance, and the language actually allowed for the student's name to be on a guest list just before the dance. We want to get that form from the sending school attesting to the student being a good citizen before we let them in our building. And we need time, obviously, to get that in.
Oh, all right. So this change is basically to provide you guys with more time?
Correct, to make sure we know who's coming into our building.
I didn't understand that. Okay. Thank you.
Page 25, we just made sure that the clubs and activities were up to date. As you know, sometimes with interest, things change, new clubs are added, maybe a club is removed. Page 25, this was kind of some contradictory language in regards to clubs. As I mentioned on the top of page two, which is reflective in page 15 of my handbook, the students have to maintain the same requirements for athletics as they do for extracurricular. Page 25, under dismissals, we wanted to reiterate, parents or guardians, guardian must consent, and this is required for dismissals, 18-year-olds, under the assumption they can just dismiss themselves, and we explain that, you know, it's required that you have documentation from a parent. Under page 27, just adding to food and drink, we want all food and drink to be consumed in the cafeteria for safety reasons, and obviously, you know, we don't want stains and spills all over the floor. Page 29, under electronic portfolio, we added, portfolio interview is a graduation requirement. This has been something we've been doing for quite some time, and it's worked out really well for us. Last page, on page 29, under credit retrieval, this was something we have been talking about for probably about two years now. In regards to a student who misses, you know, 50 unexcused days of school and goes to summer school, says a mayor Cooper and is granted credit for their, his or her classes, we felt it was important to set a limit on the number of unexcused absences to be able to participate in credit retrieval, which is over the summer. So we want to set that at 20 to hold the students accountable. And then page 31, we just added under Group B, number 12, midterm and final exams, that's aligned with standardized testing, and if a student disrupts, standardized testing, midterms, the final exams. And the last page, page 33, we just added dangerous weapons, we added batons to those dangerous weapons.
Now, that wasn't so painful, was it? You don't have to come back.
I'll be back anyway, but I appreciate getting it done.
Jeff?
Page 29, the under-credit retrieval. So this, this student has 21 unexcused absences and goes to summer school. What is the impact of that effort, assuming it's successful, if they do go to summer school?
Well, first of all, I hope if they've been out 21, we can find one that's excused and cut it down to 20. I know what you're saying, though.
You know what I'm saying?
You know, we would make sure, we have a great guidance staff that works with the summer school folks, and we would make sure that the students understand where they stand and whether they're even eligible to be involved. So hopefully, the first line of filtration would be that the guidance counselors would be there telling the person they are not eligible based on the fact that they missed 21 days of school.
But have we, have we eliminated any incentive for them to go to summer school?
Have we eliminate? Well, hopefully, we've deterred them from missing 20 days of school unexcused.
Understand. But if they do miss those days...
Correct.
And the light bulb goes off, they get an epiphany, okay?
Right.
And they want to go to summer school. It is essentially a worthless endeavor as a result of this policy.
In that scenario, yes, it would be.
And I guess, you know, kids are kids. They do stupid things. And I would hate, I would hate to think that if they have an epiphany, we've now eliminated a vehicle for them to actually correct their mistake and then say, "I blew it."
Well, I will tell you one thing, the gentleman to my left keeps tight reins on all of his students in his class, and we meet weekly, and he brings his attendance list, and they will have probably at least 15 conversations between Mr. St. Julian, the family, some of our counselors will be involved. So hopefully, that epiphany comes into play way before the 21st day. Henry has some tools that he uses as well with the courts. There'd be a lot of, a lot of contact, a lot of meetings, and just so we're clear, this isn't a huge segment of our population. You're talking a handful of kids.
Which is all the more reason why I would love it. I mean, sometimes I know principals don't like this, and sometimes they do, but I would love it if there was a phrase, "Unless approved by the principal." You know, something that gave us discretion, gave you discretion with a kid who just was late in figuring out how stupid he or she had been.
And this was an issue with one student one time, but what the deans are asking is to have this in writing so that day one, they can read this, and it's just another point of leverage for their first-day conversations, that, you know, you can't miss 21 days of school and expect to go to summer school. So they're going to do a great job of publicizing this, and Henry, I don't know if you have any other input on that?
And I'll just reiterate, it's a small amount of students, and...
I'm sure it is.
And the conversation that we have with those kids, those, that handful, is a great deal. I mean, once they hit, once you hit 10, we're having tons of conversation going, "Please, let's do something about it." And when they hit 20, that's, that's a lot of conversations going on. So I hear what you're going with the epiphany and going 21. Usually, if not at 21, those students are like at 30, that, that small handful, like 30 or whatever, and we're like going, "A summer school is not going to cut it if you miss that many days."
Trust me, they'll find a day to excuse a 21. This is an issue of small population.
I've said my piece. I respect the two of you too much to argue anymore for it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Those of you that attend these meetings and watch them on TV know that I don't speak very often, but I think that you're being more than generous at 20 days. And having been in Mr. St. Julian's position, in fact, he has my old office.
I got your office. I didn't, no, no air conditioning.
Yes, it's the smallest office.
Any skeletons?
And having been in that office for three years, it would be absolutely impossible for us not have, not to have tracked that student and his attendance and had many, many conversations with him and the family. And to say that somebody who's missed 21 days, let's put it right on the edge, is able to go to summer school and get credit for that, I think is an absolute travesty. So, no way that I would agree that, epiphany or not, that we would want to change that rule. Thank you.
Well, if I may, Mr. Chair? If I may?
Absolutely. I'm sorry I opened the door. Go right ahead.
No, you didn't open the door because I think Mr. Palladino knows how I feel about it anyways. I've never been a fan of credit retrieval in the first place. It's called meeting standards.
Right.
And either you meet the standard or you don't meet the standard. This whole idea of credit retrieval, for me, is almost like a paradox. If you don't make the standard, you don't get the credit. It's that simple. That's life. And this whole idea that we have this credit retrieval, and if anything, it's been tightened up because it was really loosey-goosey...
Right.
Several years ago. So it's been really tightened up. But this whole idea of credit retrieval, in my opinion, is, is not something that we should be advocating anyways, because it's called standards. Meet the standard or don't meet the standard, period, the end. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Well, I, I think it just supports the, the need for our alternatives paths, like with the Knights group.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. And those are...
Yeah, absolutely. And those are the conversations we do have. You know, when you get that much, and then you say, "Okay, we have this, another pathway is night school, whatever." So we're not just letting them go. We're just, we're meeting the standard, but we're giving up other alternatives. This is the only alternative we have.
But we're spending a lot of time talking about a very small population of high school, but as Dr. Sylvia said, we have tightened it up. We feel strongly that the fifth quarter and the credit recovery program this summer is a very strong program, and it happens to fit the need of a very small percentage of the high school population.
Okay. Anything else?
Move approval of the high school handbook.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Deb.
Good evening. Ready?
We're ready.
Okay. So a lot of these issues that we had that we made changes to were formatting issues, so I'm not going to worry about those. But I'll just highlight some of the other things that we went through.
Substantive issues.
I'm sorry? Substantive. Yes. Page one, removing the old mission statement, replacing it with a new one. Under parent-teacher conferences, it said after student dismissal, there'd be opportunities. We don't want to limit it to after student dismissal. This should be on page two. Teachers meet before the school day, during the school day, after the school day, so we do not want to limit the time with that particular sentence. Under newsletters, teachers send out weekly ones, monthly ones. We also wanted to add that they may also use social media as a tool to communicate with families because many of our staff members do that. Attendance, just removing no child left behind only because it was reauthorized. As far as attendance is concerned, because it's come up, not that it's a change.
What page are we on now?
Oh, sorry, under page eight.
All right, thank you.
I remembered to tell you the pages. As far as attendance, we do track students as well. I know we do it at both schools. One thing with the social worker that we've had this year, she's been able to reach out to families a lot more on student attendance issues, and for some of our students, we may have to take alternative routes to try to convince the families not only to attend school, but to make sure the students are behaving in school. When you look down at page thirteen, we removed kindergarten. All kindergarten classes are full-day programs. That was in there mainly when we used to have the half-day sessions, and then we first started doing full day to make sure families were aware of that. So since they're all full-day programs now, we did remove that. Page thirteen, the no-school signal. We're no longer relying on the onset fire whistle to blow in order to let families know there's no more school, so we're relying on the phone communication system.
Yeah, straight up.
And now that we don't have school at Hammond, we don't have as many families that are relying on that either. On the second page, page thirteen and fourteen, we removed the reference to radio stations because we don't use those anymore. We rely solely on the TV stations. Page fourteen, under field trips, I just wanted to make sure, and Mrs. Noon and I did this together, to make sure that it said, "Parents cannot drive their own cars with children to and from a field trip." So we wanted to be consistent with the district policy. On page eighteen to nineteen, we added the PPRA notice and consent to opt out for specific activities, notification of parent guardians' right to no teacher qualifications. That section was missing, so we added that back in. Jumping down to page twenty-eight to thirty-four, we added in the prohibiting bullying policy. We felt it was important to be in the elementary handbook as well as the district handbook. Page thirty-six, we noticed that bus suspension was in two different sections, so we did some housekeeping, and we put it all under one section. So transportation has an area. The bus suspensions are listed with the other long-term, short-term suspensions, so it just flows better. And then we liked certain wording that we kept in some. Page thirty-eight, we updated the harassment policy. We also included the incident reporting form right in the elementary handbook so that people didn't have to go back and forth between the district handbook to find it.
That's a great idea.
Page forty-seven... I'm sorry?
That's a great idea.
Okay. Page forty-seven, as mentioned, we updated the animals in the school policy. It's a lot more comprehensive. Page fifty-one, we compromised on the flip-flops, so we removed the word shoes after the word flip-flops, and we added do to stairs. I still feel that flip-flops at Minnetonka with the students that we have is a safety hazard, so I'm going to keep not wearing flip-flops at Minnetonka for safety reasons, but at DeKalb because they're one floor. It's not the same safety concern. On page fifty-two, this has to do with lost and found. It only seemed like we had one time of the year that we would donate to charity. We're leaving that open to donating clothing multiple times because sometimes it gets pretty full. And then on the last page, under school breakfast, we don't advertise in the papers anymore. We do it online, so we just updated that particular issue. And then updated the administrative contacts with proper titles and new names of people in different positions.
Question? Jeff?
Can we go back to page eight and nine? Yes, NCLB was reauthorized, but for some reason, I thought we still had, maybe it's through the state, a five percent problem, meaning anything below ninety-five percent was we were dinged for in some capacity through the state. Am I accurate in saying that?
I didn't see it in the... I didn't find it in the new authorized one, so I didn't want to leave it there, but we still...
But I think we're still under the gun for that ninety-five percent.
We can... I can put that back in there.
Madam Superintendent, you're agreeing with me?
I am.
Yeah, so I think we need to leave it in there.
What page are you on, Jeff?
Nine. Sorry, eight.
Page eight.
I think we need to keep the five percent or nine school days. I assume nine and five percent are the same thing.
Yes.
And the second question is, I was under the impression that when Beverly was hired, she was hired as administrator of special education. Has her title been changed since she was hired? So changing it to director of student services, in fact, is not correct.
Okay. I was... That was my misinformation then.
Okay.
Doesn't she have other duties besides special ed? Doesn't she have ELL and...? No? Okay.
So any reference to, just do a quick, you know, cut and paste or whatever, replace whatever it is, because I think it just needs to stay administrator of special education. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. May I have a motion to accept the changes to the elementary handbook, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you to your staff, all of you. Appreciate your work.
I move changes as presented to the district handbook.
Second? Any other discussion on the district handbook?
It's basically policies.
Yes.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Four zero zero. Thank you. Okay. Acceptance of gifts?
Yes. I would recommend the acceptance by the committee of the following gifts. Seven hundred and ninety dollars and seventy cents from Stop &amp; Shop A-plus Bonus Program to Minnetonka Forest School.
Motion to accept, please. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero.
Four hundred and twenty-five dollars and eight cents, again, from Stop &amp; Shop A-plus Bonus Program to Wareham High School.
Motion to accept?
Second?
I'll move we accept.
I thought I heard that. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero zero. Thank you.
Wareham High School, class of two thousand and fourteen, class gift to the school of stone cement path from the locker room doors to the sidewalk with plants, shrubs, and flowers, one to two park benches, and a sign on Viking Drive placed at the curb right after the middle school.
Motion to accept? Second?
Second.
But I have a question.
Yeah.
I love the gift, but there's no amount indicated, and does this mean they're going to provide the labor and the materials to do this, or are they providing money?
They're providing money, but I'm sorry, I don't know how much money.
I think we really have to have an amount to approve.
Fourteen.
And the same for the next one.
Eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Rather generous.
So I'd ask approval for eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and some cents.
To be used as follows, right?
Yes, to be used.
I'll make that motion if we don't have a motion.
Second?
You did. I'll just add it to your motion.
Fine, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four zero zero. Thank you.
Class of two thousand and fifteen. Rochelle, could you know the amount of that?
No. No, I didn't. I'm sorry. It's my mistake. Two thousand and fourteen was nineteen thousand, nine oh two, ten. That was previous.
Yeah, I got it.
So should I change that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Extraordinarily generous.
The other one was the nine thousand, eight thousand, nine fifty-two fifty-two.
Okay. Okay, so the class of two thousand and fifteen, the class gift of eight thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-two cents to the school, which will be a bench and a garden in front of the school in honor of deceased class member Chris Dorn, gym equipment, which could include bench press, three or four bikes, free weights, and athletic training table. This will be added into the weight room, and it will be to benefit the gym class.
And Mr. Chair, can we assume that, I guess in both cases, but what they want to do has been at least approved by the principal?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion to accept? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Well, I got a question.
Yeah.
Beautying... Excuse me. Beautying up the front of the high school is fine, but I think it's got to go beyond a bench. The more I walk into that high school, the more I'm appalled at how bad it looks. So I think it needs more than a bench, and we ought to make it a top priority in terms of doing something about beautifying the entrance to our high school.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
I agree with Cliff, but I think...
I just don't know who it is.
But I think some of these proposals also included walkways from the athletic doors to the sidewalk, all of which I think would be more than just a bench.
Absolutely.
So I think your point is extremely well-taken, but I'd like to see the results of this effort before we go...
I just made a point.
I agree with you. I agree. I'm there all the time, and I agree with you.
We have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four zero zero. Thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Hear a report?
I have no report this evening.
No report. Any committee reports? None? Hearing none? Any business not anticipated in the last forty-eight hours?
I have a request for the chair. I saw in the paper, rather lengthy report on suspension rates and whatnot, and discrimination and so forth and so on, and yet, I'd like to see a discussion at the school committee level on the report itself, and then anything that we're anticipating doing about it. I mean, it's made...
We have that...
It's made the paper, and it's made, you know, conversations at the barbershop, but yet, I'd like to see it discussed at the school committee level.
Why don't we put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Whenever you want.
Can we do that?
That will be the beginning. This will be an ongoing process that we'll be working on with the state. This was for the past three years, not including this past year. And so we're in the process of looking into the data, going into past records, and we have... I have a conference call scheduled on July sixth with the state to begin this discussion.
Whenever it's appropriate for you, Madam Superintendent, but I just think that we should have a discussion at this level.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Anything else? I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And for those that are still hanging on out there, thank you.